Right. And call over luggage and if you guys hear the map over like the great. Right. Another year, the most luggage to get here to match order. Proofless everything, place to ask. With the whole thing, the most of the award that is his place. Good history here and then again, another year. Proofless everything, place to ask. Good history here and then again, another year. So look, let's everything, place to ask.
The United States of America. Intuitive about the world's systems. One nation, in your eye, invisible. We're being tested, so. The United States of America. Intuitive about the world's systems. One nation, invisible, invisible. We're being tested, so.
May I have your motion to accept Eugene's present?
This is not a... Not this. Can you see?
May I have your motion to accept Eugene's present? May I have your... The, uh... If President Trump, the United States, say, three, three, three. How many minutes do you want? Two, three, four, three. How many minutes do you want? May I have your... The, uh... If President Trump, the United States, say, three, three, three. How many minutes do you want? Do you want? Two, three, four, three. How many minutes do you want?
So. Weeks of success. Second, Mr. President. Um, first, Allen, uh, under Superintendent's report, we got recognition compared to Trump. The day Kennedy still has asked Kristen to play the field. She's gonna be presenting under the commission of... Thank you, Senator. Uh, first, Allen, uh, under Superintendent's report, we got recognition.
So, just a quick, uh, facilities update. As far as...
Currently. Which we have, uh, our... She's gonna be presenting day Kennedy High School, the mission out of... So, they just asked President, uh, her group, their recognition last month. Uh, this photo was taken last week on Thursday.
So, just a quick, uh, facilities update.
Starting to examine, uh, two... First, uh, hanging the line about... Uh, right, some more work. They kind of... You are... They, uh, approved that recognition last month. Uh, this photo was taken last week on Thursday. They're standing at, uh, the clock tower at Dade Elementary. This is... Hanging in the light. So, Dade Elementary, uh, hard work. Had it pressure washed, uh, last week. And Mr. Smith sent me some before and after photos at Dade Elementary. You can tell us. Uh, the clock tower at Dade Elementary. In the backside of Dade Elementary. We had it pressure washed, um, last week. Our summer meals have been taking place this month. Um, this is the last week of our summer meals. They're after they are served at Dade Elementary County High School. Five days a week. Breakfast is from eight to ten thirty. Lunch is from ten thirty one. It's for children, eighteen years, age number. And no time. This is the last week. This is the last week of our summer meals. They are served at Dade County High School. Uh, five days a week. Breakfast is from eight to ten thirty. And lunch is from ten thirty one. It's for children, eighteen years, age number. And there's no time. This is the last week. It's pretty embarrassing. A few are having enough days taking place. At Dade County High School.
So, first, we give a shout out to Rich Hells. Uh, this year, we started... Um, the future on the top is Mr. Carter. She gives our therapist and teachers, the bottom part of Tommy Vowell and Mason Mitchell. Um, they are our skill builders. And I think together, they have a lot of cases. This year, we started about ninety kids. Um, they several of those future on the top is Mr. Taylor. She's a therapist and active person, so they are a super show. Tommy Vowell, who is basically to us. Um, they are our senior building. And have just made together, they have been by the school. Uh, she had nine kids. They had my same... They, uh, they do... Some of the parents want to wait to school, not factory things that they participate in. And they're expected to... Would allow me to please, they have just made, except they didn't work at the school today this year. They go... And our mobile pantry, the first one that we had this year was on June, to Mount Emily. Um, we distributed four to a hundred and five families. There, there's our hundred and ten. So, not totally, um, a hundred and ninety-eight adults. And our mobile pantry, the first one that we had this year would not be possible without our partnership with Mount Emily. Um, we distributed to a hundred and five families. So, um, yeah, thanks, like, they'll totally open about a chip, a hundred and ninety-eight adults. And we collected, um, this would not be possible without our original school. Because the hospital gets such a player in the heart, uh, that works to reduce weight or areas. So, um, thanks, like, I've been a great helper, my wife, we share first, so fifteen families that probably are elected. And that, and we say, we can go to our house. For our own schools, our houses, because the hospital... Um, but I just wanted to give a shout out to, um, the helping hands. And, um, seeing that, great for our, our work, it's certain. And, uh, that part, and that number six. Um, and then, uh, the day first, connection. United Way, Greater Chatham, United Way, Greater Chatham. But I just wanted to give a shout out to London, those helping hands. Um, they are also flooding, uh, out of her hardware. And, uh, to our students, to our people. And, uh, and then, like, they were certain to connection. United Way, they also want to be, United Way Ground Expo, which is just on the... Uh, they need to come. Uh, they're also wanting to help with them out of, um, they had a weird scene, Microsoft's talk coming on. And, um, also want to thank, uh, SRO, Danny Reyes, who is there, she'll, uh, tell the flex was there. They are also want to be running our next move. Um, President Mark Cameron's from, uh, Attorney Anderson. You know, um, they're having to see currently. Uh, also want to thank, uh, SRO, Danny Reyes, who is there, she'll, uh, tell the... Yes, sir. So, we need to be there at eight o'clock. The, um, her, her, my mother, I think, there was late last time. Uh, the truck should be there at eight o'clock, first, uh, and it's not, could not, wants us to pass out at ten. But, uh, the truck was not there till, yes, sir. So, we need to be there at eight o'clock, like, uh, personally. I'm not going to, because it was late last time. Um, and the next thing on the road is just social workers, catch, what's that? I'm not going to go over this in very detail. Um, if you guys have any questions about, uh, if you're sitting there, it's almost six o'clock. I hope they can be answered right after the board meeting. Um, but just, uh, we, and the next thing on the road is just, uh, social workers, and that job. I'm not going to go over this in very detail. And, uh, you keep that in mind, which is, uh, they, uh, they were, um, they made, uh, hoping what's true, they answered, uh, all of us in September. But just, uh, we, um, in this rate, it's eight, uh, version right, actually, how we there, we were conducted. That's okay. Um, truly secure, uh, we are, uh, saying that is six, uh, ninety-two percent. And they were, uh, made, uh, middle health insurance, and a hundred and ninety, uh, all of us were made. Um, um, there's a great rate, uh, version right, actually, went down. We did a hundred and four to per cell. And then the other, uh, two percent, six-three. Uh, I have that there, but there's a question for us, uh, may a hundred and ninety-nine children, uh, or maybe, which is parents that... Then there's a white nation, and rich house schools. Um, the factory was, uh, make there was seven, two percent. Um, and then, and then the other, there was three incidents. I have that there, because seven of them resulted in hospitalization in our schools. Ten of them resulted in judge, uh, seventy, which is out there. Uh, they did press reforms, and then there's thirty, they resulted in a book on, just access response. And I did want to say, uh, this process, uh, seven of them that resulted in, uh, the utilization is actually helped us. Ten of them resulted in just, uh, six, uh, in, uh, the extra resource. And then, three, just resulted in a book on, just, um, us coming. And I did want to say, uh, Houseville eight fifty-five, um, that I'm working on, I'm doing patient for that. Actually, you know, this is right on that. Uh, that is, that is a houseville that was created, um, the, I guess, on this... Uh, good year thing, so we are talking, uh, country. And I'm working on, uh, something about, uh, CNA, that is services. That is a houseville that was created, um, every support for this, on this, for this new, uh, Trump, uh, check, and, uh, for state, who might be watching. Forces of years, large job. And see, it's, it's right as my service on that, they don't be on, they don't, uh, that. Um, they don't help to be, uh, some of our teachers, they, they, they made that more, they would be like, uh, original, uh, opportunities for our teachers. Uh, that go along, it's right as, uh, on that, you know, students who are, uh, across that. They, um, they don't help to be, uh, some of our teachers, they, they wish that they would like, uh, so, for our teachers. Uh, like, oh, yeah, I did that, and we may have something, uh, that some children actually know about trauma. And behavioral intervention, this is also something that, uh, Taylor, uh, we're working on. Uh, she had a lot of, uh, that was low, uh, and has, we may have something, uh, for her. And we just work together to help them with, uh, behavioral intervention. This is also something that helped Taylor, uh, uh, kindergarten packets. She had a lot of things, I already gave the order to start those. Uh, she can buy your, uh, and we, uh, to help, uh, foster, uh, foster, uh, support. Same thing, uh, we do every year, just opening up data, I think. Probably the same words, uh, I think, uh, things, I already gave the order to start those. Get ready, uh, for them, just, uh, their picture passed out. And, and, uh, for, this year, and, uh, for, it's poster, look completely different, we do every year, just making up there. We're going to probably the same word of the plan, uh, and now we have, uh, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that, uh, interesting, uh, picture. We are, we did, uh, this year, mainly, uh, is going to, or they completely different. We, um, we're going to, um, documentation plan. So, that is personal for me. Um, our social workers have to keep documenting for, uh, we are, we do, uh, and they're personally, uh, have to admit, they were in there to the state at the end of school building. So, I have just been working on documentation. So, that is, uh, social workers have to keep documenting for, uh, fifteen years, and their registration. So, every year, so on the registration, it is, uh, for real, uh, kind of, uh, campus. Uh, Ms. Reyes, and Smith Schander, and, uh, we, uh, to make that all, we're working together to, and then, this thing, uh, on our disclosure. We launched it, so on the registration, uh, we have had a total of thirty-five national moves today. Uh, we also opened that way to go there to, first, before they go with, uh, a hundred and thirty-five patients a day. We launched it, uh, frequently, uh, uh, getting, uh, students. Um, we have, there's only, uh, a hundred and thirty-five, we have more agents today, uh, because of last time, I, uh, it was, uh, last, so, uh, probably a hundred and thirty-five patients a day. Um, also, challenges that we have found with this, uh, is something, and that they do this with, uh, there's probably truths. It's, uh, it's all on registration, you completely don't even have to go into the work if you don't want to. Um, challenges that we have found with this, um, there's even an upload button. Picture, uh, pictures, whatever, documentation that we... With all on registration, we're gonna, uh, completely, um, don't even have to come in, and you'll have those, challenge all that, everything, uh, the picture stuff. There's even an upload button, where you take a picture of them, uh, you already be in the... Whatever, uh, location that we perform. We do also offer, um, options for, if you don't have to, you have, uh, this challenge, you also have, uh, and, um, the picture stuff, uh, situation, uh, to be accepted. But, and then, already, so, uh, same, uh, looking on your, uh, we do also offer, uh, options for, uh, just to, uh, where you like to go, accommodate, uh, uh, anytime you want, uh, location. We are super excited to get going, and they, uh, a whole lot of time, they provide a lot of paper applications. And there's also, uh, a feature on it, where instead of us having, uh, big, big paper packets to them, there's every year to fill out. We are super happy with this, so there's also, uh, on this. And there's also, uh, a feature, also, there's, uh, instead of us having to send home the big, big paper packets to them, there's every year to fill out, refill up that information. There's also an option that will... Derek, how is the, uh, mobile pantry, uh, is it one for... Yes, ma'am. In June, it happens once a month. So, we did June up, now we're doing July fourteenth. Uh, but for the school year, it happens every Friday. Miss Derek, how is the, uh, mobile pantry?
With the June and the July, it's...
In June, it happens once a month. So, we did June up, now we're doing July fourteenth. But for the school year, it happens every Friday. As long as you were in need, and you showed up to get it.
With the June and the July, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, 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 uh.
So, that is for anybody that we sign up, or in need, sign up, a lot of the things, uh, our, uh, meetings. Um, this is, uh, made, uh, 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 and, uh, that's what we want, let's find the purpose of it. So, that is for anybody that we sign up, uh, we just saw them, uh, Mr. Martin Howard, and meetings. The only thing that they have to do is just sign, uh, just, uh, the, and that's what we want, let's kind of, uh, put yourself, uh, to, uh, uh, to, uh, uh. We just sign those, uh, they just stay on there, and they just have to be, uh, within their, uh, position, uh, just, uh, have a bit of, uh, donations, it's just, uh, you made it, you know, you can be signed, uh, and access, uh, to... Every Friday, and, uh, we do, is the high school, uh, adding bags, and our school system, uh, we've actually had several, uh, like, uh, to, uh, to, uh, uh, uh. Um, every, they pack the bags, and some students, some hospitals, they pack the bags, they litter on the buses to go home. We actually had several other bags from here, uh, so, uh, more, you know, made to give them, uh, right. Um, they pack the bags, and some students, uh, they, uh, they litter on the buses to, uh, give that for information. Bags from here, I always think about, uh, they need to get with the...
And is that in collaboration with the...
Cause I'm, this man, uh, and, uh, and, uh, we got, uh, not, uh, don't, uh, got any transportation. Then we serve all four schools, like, uh, if we have a family signed up for, uh, that is, uh, this man, uh, this man. Then we could do, uh, and, uh, uh, that's like, uh, and then we serve all four schools, like, uh, that, if we have a family signed up for, they just stay on the, uh, and, uh, so, keep, uh, 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 uh.
Thank you. I would, uh, step back, sorry. Just a second. Great, thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is the budget.
All right, this is the, uh, budget presentation, once again. This is our overall tentative budget, FY twenty-four tentative budget. As you can see here, there's, uh, general fund. All right, this is the, uh, budget presentation, once again. This is our overall tentative budget, FY twenty-four projects, our loss fund. As you can see, uh, see here, there's the overall, uh, general fund revenues. Uh, there's, uh, state old revenue, state funds, just over a few million dollars, which makes up seventy-two percent of our regular budget, general fund budget. Um, local tax, general fund revenues, uh, projected from state, and then other state funds, this is thirty-nine dollars. Makes up, uh, funds, uh, grants, uh, one general fund. For both taxes, thirty-one loan revenues, uh, just about twenty-one million dollars. And then, other local sources, some, uh, two percent, that comes from state departments, other grants, thirty-one percent, lower taxes, and so, we're doing now, general fund revenues, uh, just over twenty-one million dollars. Um, and as of July first, we are, uh, estimated to have a fund balance at over our taxes, it's millions. So, with total revenues coming in, um, at twenty-one million, as of July first, we are next year, estimated, uh, to have a fund balance at twenty-two million. Million, uh, leaving our, so, with total revenues coming in, our revenue, one million, um, and our total expenditures for next year, are, as we added, uh, these numbers, were twenty-two, the broad range, and seven point one million. Leaving our expenditures, uh, leading to this net difference of nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars. There's been an increase in state health benefits for the employer. Some of the factors leading to this net difference for years, uh, five, three hundred and forty-four dollars. Uh, there's been an increase in state health benefits for the employer, teaching units that we, uh, receive, five hundred dollars for employees. Those two years, we like to take staff bits, and we will receive the funding for those, those staff members here, but for the certified teaching units that are locally funded, she... Not on the allotment sheet. Those teachers who like to take better bits, and we will receive the funding for those. Classified staff, there will be certified citizens, held at our local well, that are not on the, our, uh, clear, local, staff, uh, that'll be a three-year phase in, and that... Classified staffs, there will be a increase in, in health insurance as well. Also seen, uh, state salary increases for certified staff, uh, for the, it'll be a certified staff, these two thousand dollars, these end begins, for the teachers that we, twenty-two, for the allotment sheet. Also seen, we will receive salary increases in the certified staff, the individuals, for the locally certified staff, it's two thousand dollars, they will, again, for the certified teachers that we, uh, serve, by the allotment sheet. That we, we will receive the funding for these individuals, but these individuals, uh, local... Reduction in equalization funding, uh, this next year, uh, we are losing seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars to, uh, the equalization. Uh, we are receiving, uh, reductions in equalization funding, uh, this next year. In addition to that, we are losing seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars to, uh, equalization. Uh, we are receiving over, over, no decrease, ninety-six million dollars, plus two virtualize meals. And then, in addition to that, our local air share, uh, is came three hundred and ninety-six dollars. This budget, uh, presented here, was calculated on a millet rate of fourteen point two, which is our current millet rate. And at a zero percent change, this budget, uh, was, uh, was, uh, received, presented here, was calculated on the millet rate, seven point two, which is our current, uh, millet rate. Again, was, and at a zero percent change, millet rate, which was our, uh, receiving tax, uh, should be received at value of one mil, end of Y twenty-three, but it's approximately, this budget, again, is seventy-three thousand dollars. Two millet rate, which, uh, which was our breakdown of our expenditures, instruction value, makes seven sixty-nine, end of five percent, our budget, our general fund budget, four hundred, the pupil service, then, three point three. Instructional breakdown of our expenditures, instruction, makes seven sixty-nine point two percent, our libraries, general fund budget, two percent, the pupil services coming in, heading three point three. To instructional support services, one, uh, four, administration, three point two percent, media, school, uh, media, library, uh, two point two, the service setting, one percent, heading maintenance operation, eight point three percent, library. Two transportation, registration, three point two percent, underscore, and then, seven point seven, is, ten, business services, one percent, uh, so that brings, maintenance operation, eight point three percent, just over, two transportation, three point five, and other, uh, underscore, our recent reviews, it is ten point percent. Uh, so that brings our objective, uh, just over...
Next item on the agenda is public input. What's in public input? We have public input, we're moving on to action items. And the first action item is that, what next item on the agenda is public input?
I recommend the board of proof, the FY, uh...
Public input, we're moving on to action items. And then, motion, that, uh, is that, why twenty-four budget.
I recommend the board of proof, the FY, uh...
First by Julie, second by David, is there a motion for that?
Sure, Luke.
Okay, may I, since monthly financial screening, you have three minutes. First question, second question, I'll go, David.
Hard to believe, this year...
And this report is from July first, twenty twenty-two, to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And with that, we completed ninety-one points, thirty-seven, it was there the last time. For our general fund, or... For our general fund, we're just on July first increase, and F one tax collection for nineteen eighty-eight twenty, for the tax collection. And with that, we've completed ninety-one point two, July twenty-two, to ninety-one point thirty. Our total revenue thus far is nineteen million, increase in F one tax collections, eighteen five hundred and fifteen dollars of collections. Now, the largest move of that, a little over fifty-seven percent, is our QB. Our total revenue thus far is nineteen million. Moving to our expenditures, for July twenty-two, we've created seventeen millions, take larger than twenty of that, a little over fifty-seven. Six hundred and fifty-seven dollars QB twenty-seven cents. Again, the largest movement for our expenditure is for our general fund, projects created seventeen million. So just re-capping for our general fund, our beginning balance is seven dollars, twenty-three, seven six million. Again, the largest, working the previous of that is seventy cents towards the structure. We've collected in revenue, so just re-capping our general fund, beginning balance, twelve twenty-three, seven seven million. A hundred thirty-six thousand, we're working seventeen million, six hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred. We've collected revenue, nineteen million, seven five hundred fifty-three. Then over to the balance, our general fund, at the end of May, twenty twenty-three, sixteen seventeen million, three hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven thousand, two six hundred fifty. Or fifty-seven dollars, twenty-seven cents. Moving forward to our splash, our balance, again, only one point seven. Eight million, splash five, our previous month's balance was one million, six hundred fifteen thousand, sixty-three dollars. Moving forward to our splash, we earned two hundred twenty-one dollars of payments in interest. We have outstanding splash at, our previous month's balance was one minute, six hundred. Leaving the balance in splash five, about one minute, six hundred fourteen. We earned two hundred twenty-one dollars, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars in interest. We have outstanding checks, splash six, forty-five dollars. Our previous month's balance was three million, our balance in splash five, about one million, six hundred twenty-seven dollars, ninety-three cents, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars. We earned one thousand eight dollars and forty-seven cents splash rate. With our previous month's tax, three million, twelve hundred and ninety-four dollars in ten cents, six hundred twenty-seven dollars in balance, splash six, with four million. We earned one thousand eight dollars and forty-seven hundred in interest. We collected in sales tax in our entry fire count, plus that one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars in splash six. Leaving the balance, our previous month's balance, four hundred two hundred and eighty-seven ninety-seven dollars, six hundred seven. We earned a hundred and twenty-seven dollar entry fire count, which we made. Leaving the balance, our six hundred one thousand, our previous month's balance was five hundred one thousand. The next section we've got to break down is our monthly. We earned a hundred and twenty-seven dollars in savings. Leaving the balance, twenty hundred twenty thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars. And then the last section on the. The next section we've got to measure is broken out our monthly facilities, monthly, you know, we have some of a slight increase from. For our construction and progress, remember our Davis kitchen floor. And then the last section. At this time in June, we have received our last invoice. However, this report is as of May, so there's no additional. For our construction and progress, remember our Davis kitchen floor. Um at this time, the DES, we have received our last, no can invoice. However, this report is as of May, so there's no additional. Moving forward to our grants, we've completed, ended sixty-three. And then for the DES, H E C project, um no can invoice. And we have begun, the year-end pulls out, so we're starting to close things down for our grants. Getting ready for next year. We've expended sixty-three point four percent of the grants for this year. And we have begun, the year-end pulls out, so we're starting to close things down and get ready for next year.
I recommend the board approve the monthly. I recommend the board to.
We assist G S B A risk management services.
Uh I recommend the board approve the renewal of risk management services with G S B A for the FY twenty-four school year. This includes our property casualty insurance, our all-out transportation. Uh I recommend the board approve the renewal of risk management services with G S B A for the FY twenty-four. This includes our property casualty insurance, our all-out transportation, and our work.
Do I hear a motion to approve? G S B A, first, just the next second, I'm David. Next, this name is core over here, first, two for next second.
All right, uh next, as mentioned, the Davis corridor repair RFP, I have uh on Zoom with us, architect Kim Marles. Uh to share information, as mentioned, the Davis corridor repair RFP, I have.
Can everyone hear me clearly? All right, I apologize, I couldn't be there in person today. I was delayed beyond my control. I wanted to be there, but um. So here we, really quick, let me share my screen and I kind of walked you through. Asked the contractor to bid on my controls. I wanted to be there, but um. So, really quick, let me share my screen and I'll kind of walk you through. Um ask the contractors to bid on. What we've got, if you're familiar with the end, can everyone see my screen?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so the end of the corridor was just open and so um. Contractor that was responsible for the. What we've got, now, if you're familiar with the end, can everyone see my screen? Got closed out. So the end of the corridor, we went out there and we did a cycle time, contractor that was responsible for demolition. We designed, you know, many of our lights that period of time, closed up the end of that corridor. One thing we went ahead and did, we went out there and we just made a window opening elevation, the same life as a normal door design. So the whole time, times when we wanted to see the end of the corridor. You really, we're gonna have to be able to do this block, we made the window, and the auto ready, or size, or like, it's a normal continuing down that corridor. So when the time value, we want to kind of forward, then we're like, you're really, they're gonna have to be able to do this block. Slab, the existing stone, regular sized door, maybe the remaining of the stone. Gosh, if you have that slide you showed earlier, then you can see that. The remaining stone that stacked the existing slab, the existing stone. And after stabilizing, maybe around the stone and if. Or do you actually, if you have that slide you showed earlier, the concrete block, the two ceiling, the stone that stack adjacent block or at the end of that corridor. And have our ceiling, stuff got to match the existing stuff, new footing, new uh lay, new concrete face block, two ceiling, the existing split face. The new windowsill corridor. Um that's all like, still, new stuff, go to match the existing stuff. There's also an open stairwell, all the grills, all the gaps from the reps, they got to shore it up as well. Split face, the new windowsill, design is on. And that's also new fire green wall. There's also an open stairwell that new grills have got from the, you know, short rep as well. To maintain this door and this egg, this will become a dead green wall that'll be. So this door, the stairwell, new guardrail, a stairwell coming out at the end of the door. And have to maintain this door and this egg. And they'll come in, a matching ceiling, a matching floor, and they'll paint everything to match. Uh restore this stairwell, we put that at the bed a little over a month ago, and they'll come in. We received one percent of the building, two people show up for reconstruction, and they painted everything to match. Um and we received, we put that at the bed a little over a month ago. We received one percent. So we had a two degree problem, they were the contractor. That, um they did the Davis repairs to the kitchen floor. So this was their proposal, we looked in line with the amount of work that we had asked them to do. That, um if anybody has any questions. They did the Davis repairs to the kitchen floor, so this was their proposal, um we looked in line with the amount of work that we had asked them to do. Um if anybody has any questions or anything, I'll be glad to answer them. Yeah, that work is complete. They did a really good job on it.
So can, can I just clarify, this, this, this design here, in this RFP is.
Yeah, that work is complete. They did a really good job on it.
Expansion into the future. So can.
Correct, so it'll match the existing construction, so it'll look like it's always meant to be there. But it's also designed for easily removing this material where, you know, we'll tie it later on. Existing construction, so it'll look like it's always meant to be there. But it's also designed for easily removing this material where, you know, we'll tie on later on. And you, you would need to do this work regardless. Yes, that's correct.
The exterior works out, that's going in, and you said this door on the other gate.
You, you would need to do this work regardless. Yes, that's correct.
Can you show me what that looks like?
Um, there's some existing stone stacked up right here, right now. That's sort of actively holding up this corridor slab. Um, there's some existing stone stacked up right here, right now. That's sort of actively holding up this corridor slab. Um and again, if you have that picture up, you can see that in those pictures, and then that slab. Laying this new wall up.
How many feet is that?
Um and again, if you have that picture up, you can see that in those pictures, and that slab. Open, in the, in the center corridor.
And how many runs?
Across here?
Yes. Do you have, how many runs tall will they have?
Nine foot four. Uh, well, seven foot four to the top of the window opening, which would be a door opening, that's your standard door opening. I'm sorry, how many runs? Concrete block goes up. Uh, well, seven foot four to the top of the label, but it would be a door opening, that's your standard door opening. Uh, concrete block goes up. Sixteen year, I don't have a label, but it, one, two, three. Sixteen. Um, about twelve feet tall of the roof. Structure. Um.
So you're saying that that is gonna be? The split face block all the way up?
No, it'll be split face like it is now. Um, there's split facing runs all around the bottom, band. And then it changes over to stucco. Um, no, it'll be split face like it is now. Uh, they're split facing, they're all around the bottom, so band. Just like the rest of the stucco of that corridor. That's what's running here now. Two foot eight about the floor, band, and then split face on the bottom. So this is just like the rest of, from there up to the corridor. That's what's running here now. Yeah, a band, a split face on the bottom, and then ephes or stucco. Right, this will match the same elevation as the rest of the, of the capstone that's out there underneath the windows. The caps off the rest of the split face block. Right, this will match the same elevation as the rest of the, of the capstone that's out there underneath. There's a lot of homework that has to take place just to shore this up to begin with. And then, you know, they gotta go in there and dig that footing. It's just, it's, it's one trade after another, so. But has to take place just to shore this up. It's really all of it adds up, and then, they gotta go in there and do that footing. It's, it's one trade after another, so. So it just, it's several different trades. It's really all of it, yeah. Short little pieces of structure that has to go. I mean, I'm sure it's a little bit, most part, but there's a lot of stuff they have to do, building up actually. It's just, it's several different trades a lot of the time, it's expensive. So, I mean, I'm sure it's the wall for the most part, but there's a lot of stuff they have to do. Well, they're building square footage, yeah. You can't really base this on square footage, though. Yeah, you're not really building a whole lot of extra square footage. But, well, they're building square footage, yeah. You can't really base this on square footage, though. Yeah, you're not really building a whole lot of extra square footage. There's a lot of prep work they have to do before they even get started.
How much of that is, uh, you said this is for the girls.
There's a lot of prep work they have to do before they even get started.
Up there, how much of that is, uh, you said this is for.
We were leaving a hole in that wall and building today, how much of that?
New build has to be done up there, um.
Um, well, I mean, you gotta close it up and make it weather tight.
I understand, but I'm saying if we were building today, has to be done. What would that, what would that savings on this?
Um, well, I mean, you've gotta close it up. Well, you wouldn't be building the wall from here up to here, and you wouldn't be installing that window. That's really the only difference. You'd still have that opening. Well, you wouldn't be building this wall the rest of the door up to here, and it wouldn't be tied on the end of the door. It's really the only difference. Really, the only thing, you wouldn't be having that opening. This portion of the wall, the rest of this window, or whatever would be tied on the end of the corridor. So really, the only thing, you wouldn't be building the, this portion of the wall and this window.
Taken off here to add that building on. According to what you're saying, the only thing that would need to be taken off here to.
Right, so it's, it's, this opening, so this block will come through this day.
That's further, a foundation is necessary, correct?
Right, so it's, it's, this opening, so this block will come through this day.
Question is, how much are we spending now?
It's gonna be, it's gonna have to be there anyway. It's a necessity there.
And then will they have to go back and undo any of that to tie in?
Just the block, and it's gonna have to be there anyway.
That's just right here. They would cut out, that window.
Just the block.
When a girl was on the screen right there. That's just right here, no, in that word, that window. That's when he's chopped down. And really, and it's, and it's not that much because this is mainly an opening in that wall. The structure is already poured for this opening when you do this chop down. And it's just simply knocking out. You probably actually say mainly another block, and then you'll pour a slab in there. It's already, it'll be one of this opening when you do this.
Sorry, how wide is that?
So it's just simply knocking out this way. You probably actually take it down one more block, and then you'll pour the slab through there.
How wide is that? Is it, sorry, how wide is that? The picture makes it, it's just for the structure and then the break front.
Um, this will be your wall for that, for that portion of that building, so um. It's hard to predict until we know exactly what's building, but that's the building from here to here. For that portion of that building, so. It's the section from the, from the, that carries that wall down to the. Carries the building again, but that's the footing from here to here.
Can you not just?
It's that, it's the section from the, from the, it carries that wall down to the, carries the wall.
The double doors just secured? Can you not just?
You could, yeah.
Would it be any cheaper?
You could have, what we do is, you would touch, so here's the finished floor down there, and you take out those blocks. Yeah, and then you just have a set of double doors. But we do, yeah, you would touch, so here's the finished floor down there, and you take out those blocks. And then you just have a set of double doors. You think they were part of the other building?
See, originally there was seven doors in that.
I think they were part of the other building, I think the double doors were there. Um, I think it was part of the other building. I think they were part of the other building. So you'll have a double wall there, and each side will be reading in itself, so this building will be its own wall. And then you'll have another wall that comes through on this side. So you'll have a double wall there, and each side will be reading in itself. You did a building where it sticks up, and the building's built, and then you're gonna have those sides. Or it'll live, it'll have its own wall, um. You could do five separate ways to do that. One fire building sticks up, and the building's built independently on both sides. Double doors, it's a living and habits on the wall.
That would be.
But this, yeah, we could do this, we could build a uh.
Would be a waste in my hand, correct?
You could build a set of double doors right there.
That would, that would be less expensive than.
Yeah, could.
No, it's not gonna change the price a whole lot, correct? We're also would put waste, exterior double doors.
Yeah.
Can you start the RFP process?
Yeah, could, um.
No, it's not gonna change the price a whole lot.
Well, we could go to the contractor to turn it in, and either ask them for a best and final offer or negotiate with them. Um, you know, as we know. Turned in. We could go back to them and get them, resubmit the proposal with this change, or negotiate with them. Or you can award it, and you know, negotiate with them. But to make. We could go back to them and get them to resubmit the proposal with this change. Or you can award it, and you can negotiate with them.
Breakdown of their proposal?
Go back and ask them to resubmit.
Um, not really, no, I mean, that's.
Even did they, did they give you a breakdown, or was it just one set price?
Um, not really, no, I mean, that's.
Even partial? Or was it just one set price?
No, we really didn't have a breakdown, no. It's really just a lump sum. But I could ask for one.
I'd like to see one.
Send this over, really, we get them to send us a prize. It's really just a lump sum. Are you guys meeting again? But I could ask for one. And we're gonna send this over to them and get them to send us a prize. Is, is the board, you got a meeting again? Do you have any called meetings? Or is it gonna be another?
No, I'm making this recommendation tonight.
Okay, is, is the board meeting again? Do you have any called meetings between now and?
No, I'm making this recommendation tonight.
To negotiate something that would not, that would really.
I'll put it, I'll put it right, recommendation.
To change the doors.
Does it take an agreement? To change a visualization, possibly negotiate that, um, that would, if that serves.
I'll put it right, recommendation.
That contingency allows to send this RFP, should have a place.
Or it will be.
Or a safe scenario, you do a change order, which I don't watch the orders, but. It's like, it's like this money, and then it serves enough purpose, because the wind is just gonna be wasted.
And the doors got, would be taking it out like.
It is wasted, and those aren't cheap.
Right. Does it make a difference in life?
And the doors got, would be taking it out like, no, that's what he's saying. Those doors got to be there anyway, because the building on the walls, and the doors.
Because the wind is just gonna be wasted.
And the doors got, would be taking it out like.
It is wasted, and those aren't cheap.
Right.
Does it make a difference in life?
And the doors got, would be taking it out like, no, that's what he's saying. Those doors got to be there anyway, because the building on the walls, and the doors. It's gonna be putting a door in with this, what he's.
But is this still a part of the negotiation instead of?
I'll put this in my recommendation. I don't want to practice. The downside is I think, I think.
Can you say the death of that boat for the thing?
I don't want to practice.
Ken, what was the size of that footer again?
Um, it's two foot wide, one foot deep. So it's picking up this wall. The other building would have its own independent footing for that wall. And it basically would scab onto the, to the side of this one. The other building would have its own independent footing for that wall. And it basically would scab onto the. Well, every time you build a building, it is, we typically put an expansion door depending on the buildings, because they're going to move differently and they're built at different times. Well, every time you build a building, it is, we typically put it all the way down. And it would stunt or built at different times. Part of this building's set, you're going to have footing in a time and if you put it all the way down, we have differential settlement. And if it's stopped, and part of this building's set, it kind of needs expansion footing. You would probably have differential settlement there and you would have cracks in the new building.
That makes sense.
So it, it kind of needs its own footing anyway. That's an existing door, existing stairs, except that, if, if you walked up to it, you can see about a foot underneath that slab. That's an existing door, it's going to be stored up, then refilled with rocks. If you walk up to it, you can see about a foot underneath that slab. But maybe that probably is short of, when they pour up this wall, they probably just let the concrete pour up underneath that slab. It'd be a lot easier than trying, maybe that probably just pour rock in there. When they pour up this wall, they probably just let the concrete pour up underneath that slab. It'd be a lot easier than trying to pour rock in there, I believe.
We just don't want to caving in, we want to create cracks in the road.
No, no.
I recommend the board approve integrated properties for the Davis RFP corridors repair. I recommend the option of substituting double doors. The Davis RFP corridor repair with the option of substituting double doors. For the replacement of windows.
Do you hear a motion to the secondary?
So move.
All effects. First, great, so great, second, I just tell you.
I don't remember the brass for the amount of, for the age that's been done.
That's not good, it's not good. Pretty much down the road, you just found by eyes, it's going to be more. That's not good, it's not good. Pretty much down the road, you just found by eyes, it's going to be more.
Ken, can we mobilize mobilization and start?
Um, we'd just have to give it to the contractor, but I would say very quickly, they have no incentive to sit on some of their hands. They'll need to, you know, order the equipment. Give it to the contractor, but I would say within the next two weeks. They have no incentive to sit on, sit on their hands. They'll need to, you know, order the equipment. I believe we've given them three months, so once they mobilize, get it going. I don't imagine it would take them longer than three months. So again, it costs them money to be out there, so. I don't imagine that it would take them longer than three months. Because again, it, it costs them money to be out there, so.
It costs them money to be out there, so. I don't imagine that it would take them longer than three months. Because again, it, it costs them money to be out there, so.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to them and get this process started.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to them and get this process started.
I recommend the board approve memorandum of understanding. I recommend the board approve memorandum of understanding.
Then make yours, turn second. Turn in make a second, then make theirs, turn second. Turn in make a second. You may, you have to get start.
I recommend the board approve the memorandum of understanding of head start to ensure children enroll in head start by. I recommend the board approve the memorandum of understanding of head start. Transition into kindergarten, head start certain needs or spaces for run over and time. Services is your two separate transition into kindergarten. Certain needs, at least in the range of this hill, is your two separate.
Make sure, you make the action, you're second.
Okay.
You make the second part, you're second.
Okay.
Second one. You make the second part. The next is surplus.
I recommend the board approve the items presented as surplus from maintenance and technology. I recommend the board approve the items presented as surplus from maintenance and technology. Of maintenance, we have several floor scrubbers. Of maintenance, we have several floor scrubbers.
Can I replace those? Have they already replaced those?
Yes, they're not working. Can we afford them?
No, no, no. Have they already?
Yes, these are just incident of, can I, in storage?
No, no.
Yeah. Yes, these are just incident of technology in storage. We have some devices that have room for reach, why technology? Um, we have some devices that have room for reach, why?
On the next, is the second session for personal, property, safety and state. Do I have a motion to one of the second? Second session for personal, property, safety and state. Do I have a motion to one of the second? Turn in make a second. So, eating board, very bad question.